Kathleen, how about a roll call?
Commissioner Blanco.
Here.
Commissioner Lopez.
Here.
Commissioner Mohajer is absent. Chair Seifert is absent. We have Vice Chair Dickerson.
Here. Thank you. And let's move on to the Planning Commission minutes of June 21st. If everyone has had a chance to look them over and would like to either make comments or end or get a motion, then please do so.
I move that we approve the June 21st, 2023 meeting minutes.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that meeting, that motion.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion carries. And we're going to go into public comment period now, and I believe Dana has something to say about that.
Thank you. This is for those who are on Zoom. If you wish to comment on an agenda item, please use the raised hand icon on the Zoom platform. Once you are recognized, you will then be unmuted and allowed to comment on the business at hand in the order received. The maximum comment time is three minutes, or as otherwise directed by the chair. And if you're calling in and wish to be acknowledged, please raise your hand by dialing star nine and identify yourself when unmuted.
Thank you very much. Regarding public comment period, each member of the audience may address the commission on a subject within the commission's business. Each member of the audience and each subject is limited discussion on three minutes, or as otherwise directed by the chair. These are for agenda, these are for items not already on the agenda. So if they're on the agenda, you would make your comments at that time. Otherwise, if you have something else you'd like to discuss beyond that. I don't see anybody in the audience. Dana, do we have anybody out there?
No, there's no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. Then we will go into public comment period, or public hearing, rather. 5A, Santa Maria Cemetery District General Plan Amendment, Zone Change and Plan Development Permit at the 600 Block of New Love Drive. Can we hear from staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, members of the public. My name is Carol Ziesenhenny. I'm a senior planner, presenting the project before you this evening. So this project application is a two-part request, a general plan amendment and rezone, and a planned development permit for a pre, a new prefabricated cemetery maintenance building. So this project site is a vacant, approximately 0.9 acre landlocked property to the west of the newer side of the cemetery district, which is called the South Lawn. It's south of Battles and right across from Bill Lemon Elementary, Bill Libin Elementary School, excuse me. This is, project is south of East New Love. So outlined in yellow is the project location, right here. So as I mentioned previously, the project is across South College Drive, Bill Libin Elementary School, and Azure Apartments are across the street as well. To the northwest and south of the project are single-family residences and townhomes. Access to the site is provided via a driveway on New Love Drive, located right over here, and via the main entrance on South College Drive, which also intersects with Meehan Street. As I mentioned during the study session, a future signal is being planned by Public Works Engineering, and we'll, we'll see a signal come in in the near future. So this is the phasing plan for the cemetery expansion. The master plan was originally approved via a conditional use permit in 2004. Phase one is in use. Phase two for the roads and turf, those have been installed, but so far is not currently in use. Building permits are in plan check for the administration office at the main entrance off College, located right over here. This is College. So north is on the left-hand side, Battles Road, right there. And plant, planning is underway, as I mentioned previously, for the signal. So in order to provide the best service, the cemetery has acquired the vacant subject property and is requesting to rezone to, to house their maintenance facilities for the South Cemetery. Currently, the cemetery maintenance staff have to drive down College Drive, cross Battles Road from the original North Lawn, where their existing maintenance facilities are. So the project involves an amendment to the city's land use policy map from medium density residential, which is MDR 12, to community facilities, or CF. The project will provide storage operations area, a break room for six or seven employees during normal business hours, and city staff have prepared and mitigated negative declaration for the project to comply with CEQA. And the underlying zone would be art from R2 to public facilities PF. So this map shows those changes. On the left-hand side is the existing land use. So this is the comparison of the two land use maps. On the left is the project site in red, showing the MDR 12 zone in orange. So orange right here. And then on the right-hand side is proposed land use in green for the community facilities designation. And this is the corresponding zoning map, again, showing the, the medium density residential proposed change to public facilities. So on the top is the gate from New Love Drive, looking south. And then on the bottom, you can just orient yourself on the right-hand side with this reference map. On the, the bottom photo is further along on the, the drive within the property, looking towards the project site. On the other side of this wall here are residences. And then behind this fence is phase, phase three beyond, and then the Enoz West Shopping Center in the very far background. This photo illustrates as well the landscaping that will be continued across the front of the maintenance area fencing. So these shrubs are intended to grow up and provide a nice landscape screening across this entire frontage here. So this is, these, these are the locations of some well, water well storage. The cemetery does have a water well on site. There are existing boundary walls that are about six to eight feet tall, which are proposed to remain. The southern wall is at least eight or nine feet tall. So looking with this vine-covered wall, this is a southerly wall, and this is looking east towards the houses, or sorry, excuse me, west towards the houses. This is the boundary wall here. And then with the vines, this is the southerly wall. Not pictured here are the residences to the north, but those houses are also single-story and also have a solid masonry wall separating the proposed cemetery use as well. This is the proposed site plan for the plan development permit. The project proposal includes a 2,500 square foot building with a four garage, storage bay area, and approximately 550 square feet with office and break room. So the office is right over here with the, the maintenance building and the four bays. Project includes ample landscaping, primarily along the perimeter of the site. We'll see the landscape plans in a moment. But along the boundaries are planned landscape areas to help buffer and screen the residences. Access will be via a gate. The entire site will be screened from the east by a chain link fence with privacy slats and ample landscaping shown in future slides. The privacy slats are intended to be green and again blend in with that landscaping. The building is set back from the adjoining residential boundaries at least 20 feet, which is two times more than the required setback in the underlying public facilities district. There are existing, again, six to eight foot tall boundary walls. Also included in the outdoor storage area are two roll-off containers for green waste and trash. And then there's also proposed an earth and concrete vault staging area. So proposed excess dirt from the cemetery operations, and then the concrete casket storage area along over here. Previously mentioned at the study session, representative of the cemetery district did mention that the concrete vaults due to their construction can only be stacked either single or double stack. They can't go higher than that. So as far as the waste roll-off containers, those will be contracted separately via, through Bedford Waste, Solid Waste, and their pickup times are as an, on an as-needed basis, excuse me. It's usually about every two months. Parking provided is nine spaces. I believe they only require seven spaces, eight, eight spaces, excuse me. This is the floor, the floor plan on the right. So again, we're oriented, north is left. This is the break room and maintenance office, a vestibule and restroom facilities, and then the four garage storage bays. So this will store the existing cemetery equipment, such as mowers, backhoe loaders, and other vehicles like pickup trucks or golf court, golf carts. The proposed building is to be prefab, prefabricated and painted to blend into the background. The building at its ridge is a maximum of 20 feet, and that's under the height allowed under the public facilities district. Maximum is 35 feet. The office will be shorter, at a little over 10 feet at the ridge. These are the proposed colors. So the, the screening I mentioned in previous slides are, the landscape is to be provided by California Wax Myrtle, which is fast-growing and can grow up to 20 feet wide and 33 feet tall. So on the right-hand side is just a demonstration of how, how big these, these shrubs can actually get. The intent is to provide a lush green wall for the residences, so they really wouldn't see into the site at all. Other plant materials throughout the rest of the site are proposed to be low water use, and trees are also proposed to provide shading and cooling on the project site here. And these green circles over here are to demonstrate the continuance of those other shrubs that I'd shown on, during, with those site photos to surround not only the site, but the well as well. So this project was reviewed through an initial study under California Environmental Quality Act, and the staff is recommending a mitigated negative declaration. Some impacts were identified for air quality, cultural resources, geology, and soils, mostly the, and hazard and hazardous materials. There is, there was an existing oil well on the, on the site, but that has since been remediated and abandoned according to Calgem standards. There are mitigations in place in, in the event that oil is uncovered during building activities. And then the mitigations would reduce all identified impacts to a level of insignificance and are recommended to be included in the conditions of approval for the project. That's attached to the staff report. And with that, plant, staff recommends that the Planning Commission take the following actions. By resolution, recommend that the city council adopt a resolution to adopt a mitigated negative declaration, MND, prepared for the Santa Maria Cemetery District Expansion Project. Two, by resolution, recommend that the city council approve the general plan land use map amendment and zone change, GPZ 2021-0003. And finally, by motion, recommend that the city council approve the plan development permit, PD 2022-0014. That concludes my presentation, and the applicant is available for questions as well.
Thank you very much, Carol. Before we get into the remainder of the hearing, I just want to ask the commissioners if there's been any ex parte communication that you'd like to bring forward at this time?
None for me.
Nope. And none for me. Does the applicant care to weigh in? Tom, how are you?
Tom Martinez, 26, 24, Air Park Drive. I'm architect on the project, here to address the problems. Any, any questions the staff may have. This is really a, I think of it as a replacement project. As the cemetery has grown to the south, the northern portion where all the equipment is, is, well, one is antiquated, and the, they're having to drive all of their equipment back and forth on a daily basis. With construction projects, now we're finding a real problem with vandalism, stealing of equipment, and so they, they can't leave them over there without a building. And so the, the plan is as we develop, and it's a replacement of almost exactly the same building that is there, in both instances, the office and the maintenance storage building, so that as those are developed, eventually the existing buildings will be removed and they'll be replaced with grave sites. So we think it's a very straightforward project with, with a couple of items that we had, little tweaks on with the verbiage and the, the PD permit. We got those resolved with staff, so I think we're in agreement with all of the conditions. Available for any other questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Tom. Questions for, no? You know, I, I guess I have one question about the landscaping. Is the, is the western side that's going to have all the shrubs, is the entirety of the project property site, does that have a wall? I believe it does, but I just, okay. So, so as the shrub grows, then it, and it gets fuller and fuller, it's, it's actually going to have a barrier to it before?
It, it fills up very quickly, yes.
Well, that was my concern, is that, that, that the, that it didn't fill up to the, to the extent that it encroached on the?
That's one of the reasons that we've got the wider setback, because those are pretty good-sized trees. They're basically the identical tree to what we have on the existing site. And I don't know if you have a copy of that. We did submit it to staff as part of the initial submittals. But, but the, the existing site is completely surrounded, and again, minimizing any impact against the neighborhood.
And do you see them being pruned on the westernmost edge, or being able to be pruned on the westernmost edge?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay. That was my question. Anything further question-wise? No? Okay, let's go ahead and thank you. Let's go ahead and open this to the public. Any written communications? I don't see any, no. Public comment, anything on Zoom?
If you're on Zoom and you wish to comment on this item, please raise your hand. No hands are raised.
Okay. And anyone in the public wish to just comment on this? No? Okay, then we'll all go ahead. I will bring it back to the commission and close the public hearing. We're looking for any discussions or a whole raft of resolutions and a motion.
Well, thank you, Chair. I was just going to comment that, you know, we got a lot of good information at study session, having reviewed this already. You know, looked very reasonable, didn't have any major concerns at study session. Makes a lot of sense, so they have better facility for future needs. I like what they did with the screening. That's, that was one of my concerns initially, but it's like they're doing a really good job of that. So yeah, I don't have any concerns with it.
Okay. Any comments?
No, just, you know, it's not often that we go from residential medium density to community facilities. And, you know, in life, we need room to grow and live, and I guess in afterlife as well. So I think, like Commissioner Blanco said, the study session gave us a lot of good information, a lot of good information here tonight. I like the project.
And I agree as well. I like the project, and we did hear it pretty extensively in study sessions. So I think you guys addressed any questions we had, and there weren't very many of them. Quite frankly, it's, it's a pretty straightforward thing. So anyone want to start, start the ball rolling?
Mr. Chairman, yes, I'd like to make a motion that by resolution, adopt a mitigated negative declar, can I, can I do all these together? Okay. To adopt a mitigated negative declaration, MND, prepared by, prepared for the Santa Maria Cemetery District Expansion Project.
Do I have a second?
Second that.
Okay. Can we get a vote?
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Chair Dickerson?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, my second motion would be by resolution, recommend the city council approve the general plan land use map amendment and zone change, GPZ 2021-003.
000.
0003.
Second.
Kathleen?
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Chair Dickerson?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, my final motion would be that the city council, that recommend to the city council approve plan development permit, PD 2022-0014.
Second.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Chair Dickerson?
Yeah, yes, so, yeah. Passes. Thank you very much. Yeah, but then Heather started wanting it. Yeah. Anyway. So we'll move on to 5B, the general plan update preferred land use alternative. Before we start getting into the standard list of items here, I wanted to, as Chair, bring up something that I've had a concern with, and so I wanted to discuss it with the, the other commissioners. The general plan, obviously, is incredibly important document. It discusses our, our future, or the future plans for the city in the next 20-plus years. Through no fault of this commission's, we've, we're, we're down to the bare minimum of commissioners that can vote on this. And so I wanted to bring this up because I wanted to have a discussion with the commissioners that are available as to whether or not we ought to postpone this agenda item till a point there at least four, and preferably five of us could hear all the comments from the people in the audience. And it may or may not weigh on any, any of the commissioners. But at this point, there's such a bare minimum on, of voters for this, I, I wanted to see what the other commissioners had to say about that. You want to start?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I thought about that as well when I, when I walked in and didn't see a full body. I agree that it's very important that the full body be here, although we do have a lot of members in the audience that we, we should maybe hear the testimony, since they're here, if there is any. I was just kind of my thoughts. It is very important to have the full body, but it's also important that the people that are here, if they're going to be coming up for testimony, and I know we have some letters, that we should at least listen on that.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I, I do agree with that. I think being as important as it is to get the input from the largest body that we can up here, whether it's four or five, or hopefully it would be a full slate, and don't want to delay the process either. We've got to be sensitive to that. Obviously, there's a, there's a timeline and a process to it, but I think it's as important, or maybe more so, that we have, you know, complete, either concurrents or at least full participation by, by the entire group. So I, I think, I think it warrants some consideration to, to be able to, to postpone things. But at the same time, I, I agree with Commissioner Lopez about maybe hearing some of the commentary testimony, at least at this point. We've had people from the audience or from the community come out, and it sounds like they want to, they want to speak to us. So I would definitely want to hear what they have to say.
Can we hear from staff on, on this particular thought process here?
Vice Chair Dickerson, members of the commission, I would say the city's staff's recommendation is that the planning commission hears the item, and for the following reasons. This has been noticed. There has been a study session, and we're, we're working towards this hearing process. We've also been on a, on a pretty precise schedule for the overall general plan effort. We've been on this effort for, for three years, and there's still about 40% more to go in the overall process. And the, we have tentatively, if the commission takes action tonight, this item going before the city council on August 15th. Should the commission choose to? Should the commission choose to wait, we would hear, and if there is action at a later date, we would schedule the council date for a time in the future. Likely, it would be a minimum of 60 days out, as there are no scheduled council meetings for the month of September. But at the end, it is the council's, it is the commission's discretion, but that's, this is, the staff's, we provided our considerations.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I, once again, I kind of mirror the things that the other commissioners have said at this time. I am concerned, it's not so much a concern, I think there's a propriety. I mean, as people look back on either the votes by commissioners and/or the city council as this thing moves forward, I don't, I would like to make sure that each body has had a full vetting and hearing, and everyone involved has had an opportunity to hear what public comment is. And although I recognize that it's been noticed and whatnot, this is a, it's been a long process, it's going to affect us for quite some time in the future, and I'm not sure that an extra 60 days is really going to make a substantive difference, but it will, it will allow the public to know that they've been able to address each and every member, and whatever weight the individual members have, by that testimony will go into the mix as far as how their vote goes. So for me, I lean towards postponement. But to do so, I think, what would we need, a motion to postpone it? Heather?
Yes, we wouldn't need a motion, and the majority of you would need to support that motion for it to pass. This is also on our agenda for tonight, and we do have members of the public here. Under the Brown Act, they would be afforded an opportunity to speak on the item as well, even if you chose to continue it. However, if you're kind of, if the clear thinking is you're going to continue it, we could suggest that members of the public limit their comments to whether or not you should continue it, if they have a feeling about that. But substantive comments about the general plan, they may want to wait until we do come back and we have the two additional commissioners here. But legally, of course, they get their three minutes, and they can use it how they wish.
And should we make the, would we make a motion prior to hearing their public comment on the topic?
No, because once you continue it, it's been continued, and then we move on.
There we go.
But maybe the, I think your opinion seems pretty clear, maybe we could, might just help with the audience to get an idea of what they should discuss if the other two commissioners want to give an inclination as to how they're feeling.
And Chair Dickerson and commissioners, also, we would want to identify a future date for this item.
Absolutely.
And just to let you all know what it's looking like coming up, because this is a fairly big item. So August 3rd, I understand, Commissioner Dickerson, or August 2nd, you will not be here, so we don't want to go with that date. So August 16th is the next date where I expect a full commission, and we do have three items already scheduled for that date. One of them is the downtown, one of the downtown items, the Alvin Newton Apartments. So we can add it to that date, it would be a longer meeting. When then we also have September 6th available, and at this time, we only have one item for that date.
Does it make any difference to when you would be scheduling for the city council, whether we did it on the 15th or we did it in September? I mean, it seems to me if we did it in August, we still have to wait till October regardless.
Yeah, we do have a tentative date identified for October for this general plan update item, so if you, if we had it in September, we would still make that October date.
If the schedule's a little lighter than, and it doesn't make any difference, that probably is a better way of going. How do you lean? I'd like to know how you lean on this thing.
Well, I agree. It sounds like if it doesn't make a difference, we, you know, maybe continue to September, but certainly, you know, listening to the comments that are here today would be really good. Obviously, we need at least do them that service, and I think it would be beneficial for us to hear that also. But yeah, it sounds like postponement is good for a lot of reasons. The primary one being having a full slate of commissioners, and it sounds like September would be okay, because we're not going to push out council any further anyways.
Commissioner?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I agree with that. I would love to hear testimony from those that are here tonight. If that's still, we can continue it after that, yeah, I'd be okay with that.
Okay, then with the leanings having been heard, let's go ahead and move this to public comment period. As Heather mentioned, you'll have three, everyone will have three minutes who wants to comment on it. At this point, I would hope that you comment on the postponement portion of it, and less so on the merits of the plan in totality, and mostly because I would like to hear, I would like everybody who wants to speak to be back in September, so then the full, the full number of people, the whole point is that the full number of commissioners hears what you have to say, and that that will weigh on their decisions. So with that in mind, I have three slips, and we can start off with Ken. Ken Huff? And state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ken Huff, representing Santa Barbara County Action Network. My address? Ken@sbcan.org.
All right.
Thank you.
That's an address.
That's an address. And thank you, I appreciate what you've said already, and I support that. We have a lot of comments that we'd like to make, and I spoke at the study session, so you know where SBCAN feels. I think at least three of you do. Somebody, wait, who's the chairman?
Tim Seifer.
And he's had to, he had to step out, so he didn't hear what I had to say. So he'll hear it again if you postpone this, and then I'd like to say what I said then again, and I'd like to give all of our comments at that time, so I think it's a good idea to just postpone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And be aware, you'll have three minutes in September, and I remember, I think you talked a little longer than three minutes at the study session.
At the study session?
I don't know. Laurie?
Anyway, you know what to do. Alan Diaz Correa. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Alan Diaz Correa. Address, I'll start, go with my email again, I guess, but Alan Diaz. I am the Senior Climate Policy Associate at the Community Environmental Council. I'm also a board member of SBCAN and co-founder of FRESA. And so just to keep it brief, you know, I'll mention just a couple paragraphs of the letter, but overall, I do support the postponement. Again, this is a 25-year-long document. Our recommendation as concerned community members aims to uplift the need for a more inclusive and accessible community input process. After carefully reviewing the proposals for Santa Maria's development, it's evident that alignment be aligned with the city's needs and best interests. We urge you to prioritize the measures outlined in our public comment letter. The lack of timely resources and communication has excluded multilingual working families from participating fully in the decision-making process. Embracing the infill alternative as supported by your own analysis that we've provided here, a link to, will position Santa Maria as a forward-thinking model for sustainable and climate-resilient cities. It's crucial we prioritize inclusivity, transparency, and the best interests of our community in shaping a resilient future. And with that, I do support the postponement.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Laurie, you're up. You can give an email address if you want, I guess, that's the thing to do these days.
Good evening, Laurie Tamora, Urban Planning Concepts, Santa Maria. And we understand the concern for the postponement, and I appreciate that. I do hope that the meeting that you're targeting this for, there is an indication that more of the board, the commission members will be there, and we won't be back to three members again. So I hope that's a good date for more participation. Want to make sure that the record reflects that the process that this has gone through over the last almost three years now has been very inclusive, very extensive, a lot of public participation, and I think at the next meeting, it would behoove the staff to provide a full list of all of the participation that's occurred. So any indication that there hasn't been participation, I think is a little disingenuous. The part that I think is really important is that the hybrid alternative is the preferred option for the community. It does include for infill, it does encourage densification where it's appropriate, but allows breathing room for this city for the next 25 to 30 years. And so I appreciate the staff's recommendation for the hybrid alternative, and as the primary alternative to be analyzed through the AIR process, which again, even that process is another year. So we have a lot going on here, but I think it's important to think about Santa Maria, not what people bring from other areas to Santa Maria. So appreciate your time and look forward to further discussion at our next meeting.
Thank you very much, Laurie.
Thank you.
Is there any comments online?
Yes, we have one hand raised. Cliff Solomon?
All right, let's go ahead and hear it from Mr. Solomon, and once again, he'll have up to three minutes, and hopefully he's tailoring it towards whether or not we should postpone this.
Sorry, Mr. Solomon, we're not hearing you in the room. I can see that you're speaking, but we're not hearing you.
Is this a technical issue that we had earlier? Yeah?
Yeah, it looks like we're having a technical issue. And Mr. Solomon, if you want to send your comments directly to me to be provided to the commission, that would be fine. I can, you could contact me at the office, and we can do that after the meeting. I'm sorry about the technical issue.
And hopefully he will have these sort of issues dealt with by the time we actually bring this forward again, and so he could call in also again at that point. Any other, any other Zoom things? They've been hypnotized.
No other hands raised, Mr. Solomon's trying again.
Okay.
But he's unmuted on my end, so it should be working.
Okay. We'll see if the next person is able to or not.
I don't have any other hands raised on Zoom.
Oh, I see it was Mr. Solomon again, okay. All right, then we will move on, and I think we need a, I think we need a motion. Is that correct, Heather?
Yes, a motion, and I believe planning staff would like a date certain also.
Okay. I'll, actually, I'll take the, since I brought this thing up, and if there's any heat for it, I'll put it on my shoulder. So I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we postpone this agenda item to the first meeting in September, and bring it forth then, under the hopes that we have a full vote up here. Do I hear a second?
You all second that motion?
Okay. Kathleen, let's get a vote.
Chair Dickerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, item number six, other business oral reports from planning commission and staff. Do we have anything from staff?
Thank you, yes. We have quite a few meetings coming up. So we're meeting tomorrow for a study session, and we actually have two items to discuss with you tomorrow, the Beteravia Chevron project, it's a new gas station car wash, includes a drive-through restaurant, and then there's also a project called Nutrien Ag that is on the agenda as well. So that should be a good meeting for tomorrow. And then August 2nd, we do not have any items scheduled for that meeting, so that meeting is going to be canceled. But we do have a study session scheduled for August 3rd, and then pretty much every two weeks, we have study sessions and hearings through September at this point.
Okay. Yes.
Dana, just for clarification, the Beteravia Chevron, was that Beteravian Walker, or was that a different street?
Yes, that is that project site in what was Beteravia Plaza. So it's at the corner there on Beteravia Road and that new road that's going to come through.
Oh, okay. Got it. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anything else from up here? Anything else from staff? Ooh, I hardly ever get to do this, meeting adjourned. Thank you.